Councilwoman Ward is sick tonight, so she will not be able to attend. Did you have something, Councilman Kymna? Oh, well, I'll drink it. No, it's okay. Thank you. She probably needs it. Yeah, exactly. So we're going to go ahead and do our pre-meeting. So you're welcome to come on in, and we will have our pre-meeting tonight. So we'll run through this agenda here quickly. And we have a prayer led by Councilman Spencer tonight. And three miscellaneous items for the pandemic. I just have a written report to read. We'll have Andrea Holloway here this evening from Council for Drug for Youth. And we have a former councilman, Hussy, and Natalie Newville for the capital improvement sales tax. And we have item six, appointments. Any questions? Run through these kind of quick. And then we have some presentations. Any questions on consent agenda? Bill's introduced. Number 24, Todd.
Yes, this is just to approve the budget, the supplemental appropriation for kind of formalized our budget with Vinnie Works and for our new amphitheater budget. So the commission approved it two weeks ago.
Thank you. Any questions? And number 25, Matt.
Yes, this is a, the city's received a grant for basically Norris Drive Stormwater. We had a flooding issue there, I don't know, a year or two ago. And we've applied for a grant, received that grant. It's about $243,000, seventy-five percent grant with twenty-five percent match. So we take out that, that out of the half cent capital improvement for stormwater.
Any questions? And number 26, Matt.
So yes, a item from Transportation Traffic Commission. Some folks had an issue. They brought it forward about removing a couple parking spaces on Veth Drive to help improve the site distance. Wasn't any opposition we found from the neighborhood, so it's moving forward. And moved if this bill passes.
Any questions? Number 27, Sonny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would basically roll the facade committee into the historic preservation committee. We brought this up to the administration committee and the historic preservation committee. Basically, the historic preservation commission would take over the role and duty of the facade committee.
Any questions? All right. Number 28, Mr. Marash.
Yes, this is a bill pertaining to the airport tower. The, this is a grant, basically, project. We fund eighteen percent of the tower cost currently, although this is in arrears. So it started last July 2020, and this contract runs through December 31st, 2020. So it's, takes a while for the federal paperwork to work its way through. This would provide us a grant to operate that tower. Then come, there'll be one more contract similar, similar to this that'll run through, I believe, March 31st. And then after that, the feds will pick up the entire share of the airport tower operation. So a little confusing because the dates are always off by a year in this case.
Any questions? Okay, bill's pending. Number 14, Matt.
Yeah, the $97,000 contract with corrective asphalt materials, basically, were ceiling product, product that we put on the streets a year or so after we overlay them, help, help seal up any fine cracks that have occurred to help extend the life of the asphalt overlay. And we're using a contract that the city of Moberly had bid already at good prices, and we're able to piggyback on that.
Any questions? Okay, and number 16, Matt.
Yes, this is a contract with a local engineering firm, Cook, Flat and Struble, to do a transit study of our facilities, siding study. Obviously, our facilities are quite old down there, built in 1982. We have a grant for this. About 40,000 of the 50 comes from a grant, 10,000 come from the transit CIP matching. Once completed, we hope to be able to then start applying for grants to perhaps replace this facility.
Any questions? Number 17, Matt.
This is a city-county agreement and current sales tax. But basically, the city staff here in engineering designed a, a project along Grant Street to add sidewalk, update curb and gutters, and correct some stormwater issues. This leads to the new amphitheater Todd just mentioned. The county would pay, we're estimating the cost of this project would be 650,000. The county would pay 550 of it, and with parks picking up the other 100,000, that, that pertains to the, some of their entrance improvements to set the park off from the roadway. About 2,000-foot-long project. After answering any questions, but this and the next one are both city-county agreements, and it would, it would close out the remainder of the funding for the, the county has pledged to do projects within the city.
Any questions? Okay, number 18, Matt.
So similar, similar agreement with Cole County. The, they're pledging the remainder of their sales tax in this one, then, of the 5.5 million originally contemplated for projects in the city. This will go towards MSP project and help us match our grant, as well as the city funding goes towards this to close out the MSP project that we had discussed when acquiring property from the state.
Any questions? Okay, and number 19, Sonny.
Madam Mayor, this is a supplemental appropriation for $15,000 to replenish our abatement item. Mr. Helmick will be given the presentation.
Okay, so I'll just call on him, all righty. And number 20.
This is also supplemental appropriation. It's gone through the Public Works and Planning, and I believe the Finance Committee, a staff originally requested $150,000 to address the backlog we have of dangerous buildings.
And are you going to be making that presentation or?
Mr. Helmick is really good at this presentation, so I'm going to let him do it.
We'll have him do those. Any questions on either of those? Okay, and number 22, will that be you, Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This bill would vacate the right-of-way that's behind City Hall and the police department. So essentially, the Handley Way right-of-way, and then the unnamed alley that runs north-south from Miller Street. There is a substitute. The substitute is to address some clarifications in the whereas', and then also to add a reservation of a license for non-city utilities that exist in that right-of-way.
Okay, any questions? All right, and number 23, Ryan.
So this bill would add regulations to the city code regarding small vehicle shared active transportation operations, and then also approves a form license agreement that then authorizes the city administrator to execute that agreement with essentially any, any scooter operators, scooter business operator who would like to come into the city.
And then informal calendar, number three, Councilman Fitzwater, what would be your desire for that one?
It's my intention to leave that on the informal calendar. I think we've got some additional things to discuss on that project. I do not intend to take it off.
Okay, and by leaving it on, it will expire after tonight's meeting. So we may have a little explanation on what that would mean for that particular item. Would that be something you would want to do?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, and if anyone is here to speak on that, they certainly still can, maybe some in the audience who want to. So we can still, of course, take and encourage anytime, and always encourage public input. Any questions of council? Item 15, no resolutions, 16 presentations. We have a closed session. Any questions before we adjourn? And if anyone would like to sign up to speak, they're certainly welcome to. There's a sheet out there, so we welcome that. And I noticed we also have a scout with us this evening, so welcome, we're glad to have you. And during our regular meeting, we would love to have you come up to the podium if you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us where, what school you go to, what troop, and what you might be working on. So when we start our meeting, we'd love to have you up here, so. All right, so with that, I'll call the meeting adjourned, and we will start at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. We're so glad to have you all here this evening. And before we start the meeting, we will have a prayer led by Councilman Spencer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, June 21st, 2021 city council meeting. This is also available virtually. You can click the link on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website, JeffersonCityMo.gov. You can also call in by dialing 404-397-1516. The meeting number is 146-668-5053, and the password is 1234. All that is available on the agenda on our website. This is Donaldson. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Hensley.
Present.
Kymna.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Ward.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. And we do have with us this evening a scout in our audience. We have a boy scout. I would like to invite you up to the podium. We're glad to have you here. And if you want to tell us a little about yourself, what school you go to, and maybe what project you're working on.
I go to St. Joseph Cathedral School down by West Main, Troop 104, and I'm working on the citizenship and the community merit badge.
Great, well, we're glad to have you. And I think we recognize your, your family as well. We happen to, to know, we recognize one of our own firefighters. So do you want to introduce your, your family as well?
This is my father, Michael Watt. He's the captain, I believe, down by Station 3, I think. This is Laura Watt, my mother, who is a pre, pre, pre-K teacher assistant at St. Joseph as well.
Well, wonderful. Well, we are really glad to have you here and appreciate your family, especially having a firefighter here with us as well. And we wish you the best of luck. And we wish you the best of luck with your citizenship badge, and we're glad that you're here tonight, and we hope that you learn a lot. So, thank you very much. And item four, we have our miscellaneous agenda items. As we do at every meeting, we have a pandemic update. This time, Kristi Campbell, the Health Department Director, has given me a written report, so I will read through that tonight. Currently, 43% of all Missourians have initiated vaccinations. Cole County's current vaccination rate is 39.9%. Positive COVID cases and hospitalizations remain low. 13 positive cases have been reported to the Cole County Health Department for the past seven days. Information about Cole County's COVID situation can be found at ColeHealth.org. There are currently 14 locations in Cole County that offer COVID vaccinations. The Cole County Community Vaccination Site at the Capitol Mall offers vaccination on Thursdays. Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines are currently available. Register at COVIDvaccine Mo.gov or walk in anytime before 4:00 p.m. The community site will offer vaccinations until July 15th. JCMG and retail pharmacies also have vaccine available. Most retail pharmacies like Hy-Vee, Walmart, and Target are open every day and do not require an appointment. All locations in Missouri can be found on COVIDvaccine Mo.gov by clicking on Get a Vaccine and then Find a Vaccine. Enter your zip code to find vaccine locations near you. The Community Health Center of Central Missouri will be offering vaccines at the Mobile Food Pantry Events in June. They will also have vaccines available Wednesday, June 23rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at St. Martin's Catholic Church in St. Martin's, and Sunday, June 27th, 11:00 to 2:00 at Enunciation Catholic Church in California. New variants of a virus are expected to occur over time, and variant surveillance can provide insight into the virus circulating in our area. DHSS has established sentinel surveillance to detect variants with five regionally-selected healthcare system laboratories in Missouri and the Missouri State Public Health Lab, MSPHL. The Cole County Health Department has received three variant reports from DHSS, all being Alpha Variant B117. Testing of specimens and subsequent identification of variant viruses may take about one week after the specimen is received and is not intended for clinical decision-making. Medical providers can request the submission of specimens to the MSPHL, and these requests will be reviewed by DHSS. If a community member has developed symptoms within 14 days of returning from international travel, suspects a COVID-19 infection, or develops symptoms greater than 14 days after receiving the final dose of a COVID vaccine, he should consult with his or her physician to request variant testing. Any questions? Call the Cole County Health Department at 636-2181 or visit ColeHealth.org. So we appreciate Kristi giving us an update at every meeting, and just a reminder of how easy and widely available the vaccine is here in mid-Missouri. So we encourage everyone, if you have not already received your vaccine, there are plenty of opportunities to do so. Are there any questions of council on that? Item B this evening, we'd like to introduce Andrea Holloway, the Executive Director of the Council for Drug-Free Youth. Welcome, Andrea. We're glad to have you here this evening. So tell us a little about yourself.
Yeah, so I'm Andrea Holloway. I'm the Executive Director with Council for Drug-Free Youth. I just started in this position in February of this year, but I do have prior education and experience in substance use, particularly in the opioid realm of the world that's going on right now in Jefferson and all over the U.S. So I just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself to you all. This is my first council meeting, so I do plan on attending many. So, thank you.
Well, welcome. I know we worked very closely with your predecessor.
Yes.
And Joyce Sweeney was often here in council chambers doing different initiatives to help youth in the community, and we definitely want to continue to be a resource and a partner here at the city. So if you think of anything that we can do to help, I know you have frequent meetings and emails that you send out, so hopefully all of our council members are aware and part of that. But if there's anything we can do, let us know.
Of course, thank you.
Do any council members have any questions? Well, with that, we welcome you to this position and look forward to working together, and it's nice to put a face with a name.
Yes.
So thank you for taking the time to come and introduce yourself.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Item C, we have former Councilman Ken Hussey to introduce the Capital Improvement Sales Tax H Committee, and we have with him Ms. Natalie Newville.
All righty, good evening, council mayor. It's good to see you all again. It's nice being on this side of the podium, not gonna lie. Ken Hussey, and with me is Natalie Newville, one of the tri-chairs for the committee. So I'll let Natalie introduce herself very briefly.
Hi, I'm Natalie Newville. I work at the library here in town and remember various organizations, so I know a lot.
And our other tri-chairs, Andre Grinson, who couldn't be here this evening because he's on vacation. We are here on behalf of Citizens for Proposition One. Proposition One will be on the August 3 ballot. That's the renewal of the Capital Improvement Sales Tax, the eighth iteration of the sales tax. We're excited to share that message with the community. We appreciate your all's support in terms of not only placing it on the ballot, but also putting together the package of projects and funds that it's going to support in the coming five years. We're fortunate that civic progress is once again behind this campaign for getting started in the sense that I always like to say, nobody really pays attention to an August election until after the Fourth of July. And so expect a lot more from us in the month of July and into that first week of August. Jason Schwartz from Hawthorne Bank will be serving as the campaign treasurer. We're excited to have past committee members such as John Landwehr, Bill Plank, Januar Enlow, who are gonna step up and help with our campaign as well. You know, and just a positive message, it's a sales tax that's been continued to be renewed by the community in overwhelming margins. We believe it is something the community believes in. It's a sales tax that they can hold the council and the city accountable to. You know, does the council and just the city fill the promises that were made and complete those projects? And so whether it's, you know, stormwater improvements that I know are on the agenda tonight, street overlays, major capital improvement projects, supporting public safety, supporting the Parks Department, all good things that the city has supported time and time again. So we're excited to be here. We're excited to get the message out to the community to get out on August 3 and encourage them to vote yes on Proposition One. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you both. Are there any questions? It's great to have you back, and thank you both for your work on this. And I know that this is such an important renewal, and it's really, our community would not look the same without it. And when you think about all that's been done, and like you said, in fact, tonight we have the stormwater and MSP and items that are on here that, and a lot of projects too, that we share with Cole County and how important this is. So it's great to see the support, and we look forward to the August 3 ballot.
Ologies, I'm not gonna stick around the whole time tonight, so.
Wonderful. Well, glad to have you back. Yeah, Natalie will, I'm sure, you know.
She might for a little bit, but thank you.
Thank you, former Councilman Hussey. And now, item five, we have no public hearings. Item six, appointments by the mayor, and this is Strope.
Thank you. We have four appointments recommended this evening. The first is Bob Pretty to the Library Board of Directors, Mary Shantz to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Bill Farr to the Transportation and Traffic Commission, and Lori Rosberg to the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilman Spencer?
Could you enlighten us on how that process is as far as you appointing people on commissions? Do they, people submit applications, and does that process go through?
Sure, absolutely. We welcome submissions, and there is a form on the website, or they can come to City Hall and pick up a form and fill out a citizens' commission form, and they can indicate their priorities of what commissions they'd like to serve on. And then I make a recommendation to the Administration Committee. And so Councilwoman Wiseman is the Chair of Administration, and oftentimes I will let her know these are the list of potential appointments, and then it's on an agenda for administration. Administration votes then to approve it and have some discussion at the Administration Committee level, and then they then put it on our agenda. So that's how it goes through that committee.
Okay, so when there's multiple people applying for vacancies on commissions, how does it get whittled down? All the names get moved forward to the administrative commission, or do you just pick one and then that name?
I make the recommendation to Administration Committee. They do have access to all of the list at any time, and that is a public information. So, but at that time then, Administration makes the recommendation to council. Councilwoman Wiseman?
Mayor, if I may add, Councilmen, we do discuss some of them, and every once in a while, we will in our committee pull out the, all of the people that have applied for that position. And we have done that actually several times in the last, I'd say, year, and pulled them all out and looked at them and decided whether or not we wanted more applicants, a wider pool, or, you know, whether we wanted, you know, the mayor's recommendation. So it is, and not to overstep the mayor, but it's not a rubber stamp, just to be clear.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and certainly some boards and commissions may require that position to be within a certain ward, typically not, but sometimes we will also look at, do we have representation from all wards, even though it may not require that? For example, that sometimes comes up at a committee discussion that we realize we don't have representation from a certain ward, and then at that time, we'll ask our council members to go out and let people know that certain commissions have openings. Also, sometimes we've even put out kind of a press release and let people know that we are seeking board applications so that the public is aware they can apply. But good point also for new council members, that we're always looking for applicants. So it's a good opportunity for you to let people know in your ward to apply, and again for anybody, because we really appreciate those citizens that volunteer their time.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion on the appointments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. I'm very honored this evening to have with us our former city councilman and now state representative, Dave Griffith, to talk about the Gold Star Families Memorial Monument and give us an update on that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here with you and to see all your smiling faces. Really, the Gold Star Memorial Monument, Gold Star Families Memorial Monument is really something that is truly near and dear to my heart. We had a meeting last July in the city, in the council chambers, where Tom and Sharon Knott donated $75,000 to the bicentennial bridge. And after that, and part of their donation was really tied to what was going to be at the beginning of the bridge, beginning of that bridge, and they wanted something that be dedicated towards veterans or towards the military. And I was there for that meeting, and we had a short meeting afterwards. And apparently, as happens so often, I talked way too much, and I became chairman of the committee for the Gold Star Families Memorial Monument, one that I really embrace. But I really said the only way I would do that is if Sharon Knott would be my co-chair. Later on, we named Don Hitchens also as a chair as well. This project, in the very concept, really became a labor of love for many of us. It was a grassroots group that got together, began with a committee of eight, grew to a committee of 26. We were meeting every two weeks initially, all the way up until January, and then we started meeting once a month. And the goal was, and when we started this project, we learned that most of these Gold Star Families Memorial projects took about 18 months to two years. Well, we had a deadline, and we wanted to try and get ours done so we could really celebrate that with our bicentennial. And through the collaboration, and we had a fundraising goal of raising $125,000. The monument itself cost $45,000 plus, if you wanted to have additional benches or plaques that went in that. We raised that money, and really, we could have raised that money in two days here in this community. But we wanted this to be something that the entire community embraced. We really wanted to try and get the youth involved as well. We wanted them to be able to come to that memorial monument. When they brought their kids and their grandkids to it, and they said, "We were a part of raising money to bring this to the capital city." And we've had groups from Elias High School that donated almost $1,800. We had Blair Oaks School District that raised $2,300. Our Nichols Career Center, they raised over $2,000. So really, it's been something that the entire community has been involved in, and we have donations that have ranged from $10 to $10,000. But to date, we have raised almost $100,000, so we're very close to our fundraising goal. Right now, there are 80 monuments throughout the United States that have either been dedicated or in the process of being dedicated. There are 125 of them that are also in that pool. We can be proud that our community will be only one of five state capitals to have Gold Star Families Memorial Monument on its Capitol grounds. Where it's gonna be located, and I encourage you to go by and look at it, is where the Veterans Memorial is on the north side of the Capitol, just to the east of that, at the entrance of the Senate Garage, is where it's going to go, and it's right at the very entrance of the bicentennial bridge. If you go by there now, it's in the process. They've laid a lot of the foundation, the STEM work that's done for it. I'm not a contractor. I stayed at Holiday Inn Express one time, but it didn't help me any on that, in that regard, but it, we do have some really good work. And it really is a collaborative effort between the state, between the city, the state, and the Capitol Commission. They've been really involved in every step along the way that we've done this. David Bangy has been a big part of this. I went by there, I'd been on vacation for 11 days, and when I came back, I was surprised to see how much progress had been done on it. And I gave David a call to make sure it was in the right place, and indeed, it was in the right place. And so we, it's going to arrive in Jefferson City on July the 19th. This monument weighs 15,000 pounds plus. So it takes, it takes a little bit of a heavy equipment-type thing to take it off of the trailer it's gonna come in on. So I've been talking with Chief Schwartz at the Capitol Police. I talked with Lieutenant Dave Williams here with our local police, and to try and collaborate how we're going to shut a lane down on the north side of the Capitol. Takes about five hours, five to six hours to take it off of the truck and put in place. They do all of that. The actual installation that will be done, but the dedication of this will be on August the 7th, 11 o'clock in the morning. We're praying for no rain and cool weather. But we live in Missouri, and we know that it's August, and what the weather can be like for that. But we're expecting 200-plus people. This is not only a Gold Star Families Memorial Monument for our community, but because we live in the capital city, it's really one for the entire state of Missouri. So we have reached out to Gold Star Families across the entire state, invited them to come to the dedication. We want them to be honored. Sharon and I really began this quest almost a year ago. We've made a lot of presentations, and I was surprised, and maybe I shouldn't have been, but I was surprised when I went to one of the presentations and I said, "Does everyone here know what a Gold Star Family is?" Believe it or not, there were some that were in the room that did not know what a Gold Star Family is. For those of you that are here, and for those in your audience that don't know, a Gold Star Family is a family that has lost a family member in combat. It was killed in action. And this monument, it really is a dedication to them and in honor of them. When someone dies in combat, and they come home, they are remembered. But after a time, that story goes from the front page to no page at all in the newspaper. Those families still live with that loss each and every day. This monument will be a reminder to all those, and of the 50,000-plus kids that we have that come to our community every March and April to visit, it'll be another learning experience for them. And as they go down across the bicentennial bridge and go down to the park down on Adrian's Island, they'll be able to stop, and their teachers will be able to share with them what this monument is and how important it is to all of us. I just really appreciate the collaboration that we've had on this project. It's really transcendent to all people. And we are still taking donations, so if you would like to make a donation, you can go to Legends Bank, Rosie Versalloy's, we all know Rosie. Rosie is taking donations. Still got another $25,000. So if you got any of that land around, you don't have to do with it, we'd be glad to help you with that. But be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions? We appreciate your representation of Jefferson City. Thank you, Representative. Any questions? We appreciate your representation of Jefferson City, serving us in the state Capitol. Appreciate your service to our country. You have also served, and we appreciate that, and your service to our veterans, and especially to our Gold Star Families and the importance of that. So thank you for taking the time to share the update with us. It's exciting to see the foundation poured. And I've got July 19 marked on the calendar. I can't wait to see that monument come into town. And very, very exciting times. You are also selling T-shirts, and those are available at the at Legends Bank and Kerry's Hallmark. They're $20. So there's also that opportunity to support. And I know you mentioned you're still taking donations at Legends Bank. I do have a donation here from Beth Pike, who serves on the Bicentennial Commission. And she gave me a donation in memory of Sterling Wyatt from Columbia, Missouri. So I will present that to you. I will also be making a donation. And I would also invite all of my fellow council members, no matter how large or small, to consider making a donation to this project as well. So we appreciate that very much. Any further questions? So I'd like to invite you up front. We'll get a picture so that we can share this.
You want to pass the hat while we're here?
We can certainly pass the hat. Lee is also here, your wife, Lee, if she would like to come up as well and be in our picture. And I would invite any council members that would like to come up for the picture, and we will promote this. Thank you. And now I would like to welcome Mr. Sonny Sanders to give us a CARES Act grant presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This grant is part of national acts of last year. It's the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. It is being administered through the Housing and Urban Development. So we just call it the CDVG CV Grant. Last year, the city was awarded two of the three rounds. It's an entitlement grant, at least the first and third round was. So we got the money in our accounts automatically. There is a second round that that funding is being administered to the state. There is a state CDVG CV grant that is actually open now. Excuse me. The city is eligible to apply. We are going to be working on application. We're allowed up to $2 million of that grant funding pool. And the county can also apply. But that is not part of this grant acceptance here. Last year, since this is an entitlement, we have to go through our CDVG process. Part of that involves updating our plans. We have public involvement. We send out communications to local churches. And with the help of NIDAWAY, 23 responses were received from nonprofits and churches. And the outstanding item was childcare. That seemed to be the need. There was a more narrow focus on eligible activities for this grant. But at the time, and certainly now, too, that is an activity that can help the small businesses, the daycares, and also parents that need to go to work and have someone watch their kids for them. So staff is envisioning a program where we would be able to help numerous daycares. We would award the grant to a daycare themselves. But they would have all these eligible activities here that could pay basically most of their business expenses, PPE, cleaning supplies. And the big one is also childcare subsidies. So we would be actually administering the grant internally. We would be able to take an administration fee off of that, up to 20% to cover staff costs and eligible expenses. But most of that would actually be provided to daycare providers that would then, based on their application, work to help the parents. So what we're doing is first, I guess our next step is to accept the grant. That's why I'm here. Then we would develop program guidelines, develop an application scoring matrix. So the applicants knew what we were going to be requesting them, do a call for applications, and also a workshop, so we can help them understand what we're asking for. Then we would review and score the grants, award the grants, and then the hard work, actually doing the compliance, monitoring, reporting, and whatnot like that. So I wanted to present this to kind of help get the word out to the daycares that we are going to be doing this. We do have a lofty goal of trying to get this going by time school starts. We feel that's an important time to to help the daycares and help the parents with that. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Are there any questions, comments? Thank you. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Our four council committees, you can find the agendas and dates at JeffersonCityMo.gov. So we'll run through these and see if there are any announcements. Anything from administration?
We have dispensed of our July meeting and talk about meeting in August.
Thank you. Anything from finance?
Yes, this Thursday morning at 7:30, we have our normal monthly meeting across the hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public safety?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is a reminder that on Tuesday, June 29, at 7:30 in the morning, the meeting for public safety will be at the Hyde Park Training Facility. So instead of Thursday, it'll be Tuesday, 29. Thank you.
Thank you. And public works and planning?
Yeah, we have met before June, again, on our on our regular schedule, second Thursday of July.
Thank you all. Any other council announcements? And I know that yesterday and Saturday, we had a Juneteenth celebration at Community Park. And I know Councilman Kimna filled in for me as I was out of town for a portion of that and read our Juneteenth proclamation. So thank you for doing that. Anything to add on that? Great. Well, thank you all. Appreciate that very much. And then I have a few announcements as well. So we're coming up on July 4. So wanted to remind everyone to be part of the three-day celebration this year. Since July 4 is on a Sunday, we will have events on Friday night and Saturday and Sunday this year. So it'll be a whole weekend-long celebration. The parade will be that evening on Friday evening, July 2. Also, Friday evening, there will be a concert at the amphitheater with Chris Jansen to kick off the July 4 weekend. And then Saturday, during the day, there will be vendors and events. And then, of course, Sunday, July 4, that evening, there will be the Red, White, and Boom Sky Concert at the Capitol, like usual. That's just always fantastic. So you can find more in a calendar of events at SaluteToAmerica.org. And then also, we are now less than two months out from the bicentennial. I know Representative Griffith touched on that. So keeping that in mind, that in August, we have several activities going on here in the city of Jefferson. So you can be sure to look at Missouri2021.org for a full calendar of events there. And if you're not already following Missouri 2021 on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, you can get lots of great updates on what's going on. And we will definitely have things all around the state. But we are a center for that in August as well. So a couple other announcements, if you would like to mark your calendar, we have the Firefighters' Local 671 Golf Tournament, Friday, July 23. If you'd like to play, they are still taking players, and they are taking sponsors. So please consider either playing or sponsoring a hole for that. Also, Guns and Hoses, the hockey game, is going to be Saturday, August 28. And they are also now selling tickets and sponsorship. So please see any police officer or firefighter that would be involved in that, if you'd like to give to that organization as well. It helps a safety net. And on the firefighters tournament, I didn't mention that helps for scholarships. So there's two really great causes that you can contribute to. Are there any other council announcements this evening? And item nine, our Lincoln University student, we don't have Stacy with us this evening. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We have Mr. Steve Nelson signed up to speak on 2021, number three. Welcome, former councilman, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I notice, my name is Steve Nelson. I live at 206 Clay Street here in Jefferson City, part of the Second Ward. I sit, I sat where you sit, or more accurately, where Mr. Lester sits, for 10 years representing the Second Ward. I served four years in the 80s and six years in the 90s, early 2000s. The first four were grandfathered in before they passed the term limits. Back when I served, one of the biggest complaints was the inability to find parking in downtown Jefferson City. And judging by what people tell me and what I overhear indirectly, that is still an issue. And I stand before you today, even though I appreciate Mr. Fitzwater's openness, that it's probably not going to go anywhere right now, I stand in support of the parking structure and purchase of that property. Couple of experience I had with parking situations in downtown. At one time, the city owned a surface lot at the bottom of Monroe Street, near the old train station across from First Baptist Church. State was in need of additional parking, and I spearheaded a council committee to work with the state on the issue of parking. And in a fairly short order, the property was needed to the state for the construction of a parking structure that stands there now. Back in the mid 90s and continuing for 14 years, I worked for Judge Patricia Joyce at the 19th Circuit Court as the Drug Court Administrator. And they supplied me with a nice covered parking spot in the Madison Street Garage. When the governor's office building was being remodeled, I voted, along with other members of the council, and my memory serves, it was unanimous, to rent X number of spaces to the building as part of the city's contribution to the project. As it turned out, one of the parking places was mine. It was a nice cozy, close spot in the Madison Garage. And I was then moved down the hill, a long hill, to the existing state structure that I'd helped the state acquire years before. I was glad to do it because both projects impact the progress of both of growth in downtown Jefferson City. I could have objected and said, you aren't taking my parking spot. But I learned from my parents many years ago that it isn't always about me. In fact, it almost never is. As citizens, and certainly as elected representatives, I believe it should be our goal to do what is best, what is in the best interest of the citizens in Jefferson City. From a report in Planner's Web, we read, today's cities of all sizes have implemented plans to revitalize, regrow, and reinvent their downtown. Why are downtowns important, and why the need for revitalization strategies? Because downtowns are the heart of the city and region. And having a healthy heart is essential to having a strong city and region. Also, in the same article, noted urban economist who teaches at Harvard University, Edward Glaser, recently described cities as mankind's best inventions. They are actually the healthiest, greenest, and richest in cultural and economic terms places to be. He makes a very forceful case for the city's importance and provide economic proof that a central city are the best hope for the future of a city. Like these cities mentioned in the articles, our beautiful downtown is extremely vital to the future of our city. And I believe a new parking structure would welcome additional people downtown that would go a long way toward moving progress forward. Diane Gillespie of the Convention Business Bureau gave me some statistics on visitors. And the interest of time, I'll cut that short just a little bit. But in 2018, our last normal year before the pandemic for visitors, over 520,000 people visited just the state Capitol, Jefferson Landing, the governor's mansion, Spring Court, the Cole County Historical Society, and the old state penitentiary. These figures do not touch on the many other special events in and around downtown Jefferson City, from car shows, holiday celebrations like the Fourth of July and Living Windows, to name just two, and Thursday Night Live events, et cetera. Time does not permit me to go into more detail, but I believe there is a need, current and future, for the new proposed parking structure. And I would urge you to consider or reconsider it carefully. Thank you for your time, and God bless you in your work.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Are there any questions? Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Jack Deacon to speak on 2021-3. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you, Mr. Fitzwater, for letting that die at the present moment. I hope the council takes the time to really reconsider what all of our parking needs are, where our parking should be, and actually how it should be funded, and how often we need to respeak on this subject. We should do it one time and one time only. I think the present location, unless we're doing it strictly for the state government, I think it's a really poor location for retail. If the parking drove retail, the Capitol Mall would be booming right now. I think the downtown is has to reinvent itself. It's no longer a retail hub. It seems to go more towards restaurants and bars. If that's in also office buildings, if that's the way it is, maybe our parking isn't going to be so great uptown. At the present moment, I just hope we deliberate slowly and thoughtfully and be good stewards of the citizens' money. If there's any questions?
I do. Mr. Deacon, when you said that people should or about speaking one time and only one time, do you mean you? You've spoken three times.
No, I meant the council will come back on this. Let's just do it once. I mean, Jefferson City's strength is that we're incredibly slow to pull the trigger. And also, that's one of our greatest weaknesses. We take so slow to get things done. But on something this grand, let's just think about really where it should be. It's a horrible, horrible place if it's being sold for retail. I mean, if it's being sold for state government, yeah, that could be an argument. But right now, I don't think we need the parking there. That's my own personal need, personal thought. We restriped a lot of the streets, side streets diagonally. We could pick up a couple other spaces. I think we should just use some creative ways, less expensive ways, and then then maybe pull the trigger on $13 million.
And I know that you've also mentioned that it's your quote is no longer a retail hub. And I will say, as a retailer, I just feel compelled to say something. I know you've said it the last three times you've been at the podium.
There's a total of eight retail businesses uptown. The rest of them are bars and offices.
And I will say, I don't know that there's anything wrong with having only eight. If you've got eight really great, strong retail. And what's so great about our downtown is having a mixture of retail, restaurants, coffee shops, offices, banks, residential. So what's so wonderful about not just our downtown, but what really makes downtowns thrive and strong is having the mixture. And I do want to make also a plug for how important retail is, not just downtown, but citywide. We should always be looking at how important retail is in our community, because it is through retail that we collect our sales tax, and we encourage people to shop local. And it's really vital that we have a strong retail. So I do want to just counter that. And we may not really agree about what retail is and retail hub, and where retail should be, and what's important about retail. But I will tell you, retail is extremely important. And I think that I'm going to agree to disagree with you on that.
No, my argument is not that retail is not important. It is the most, it is the driving force of the city. But right now, retail is doesn't seem to be at the hub in downtown Jefferson City. The last 20 years, with internet shopping has exploded, and with COVID, it's gone exponential. People are shopping in different ways. They're not going downtown to go into the shops. Like I said, plus with the declining population right now, to spend $13 million on a parking structure on the way into town is not going to help retail. Like I'll reiterate, if parking drove retail, the Capitol Mall would be buzzing. They're foul. Same way on the South Side, there's retail shops down there, and there's plenty of parking. I just don't think that parking is going to drive our retail. Maybe other other creative ways to get retail uptown. But I don't think it's a parking.
Well, I'm going to agree to disagree with you about retail. But the point of the garage is really supply and demand. And this particular garage, we've had studies done, and a consultant that we have has given us the information that this garage has the demand. We've determined it would be half sold before it's even built. So the point is not, it's not about the retail. But I want to disagree with you about the retail piece.
I would love to see the hard data, names and numbers, and how many spaces truly are filled, who really wants to sit in line and do it. I think we're just running too fast on it. I'm not saying we should never do it. But I just think there should be a more deliberative process.
Thank you, Mr. Deacon. Thank you. Just couldn't let you, couldn't let that retail piece get by. I appreciate all the retail in the entire city of Jefferson. That is all we have signed up. Is there anyone here, though, that would like to speak this evening? Thank you. Thank you. And next, we will go to item 11, consent agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bill's introduced, 2021, 24.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the FY 2021 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Park Fund.
Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Mission and park staff is requesting a supplemental appropriation from our Park Fund. And the purpose is to create our Division 290 for the amphitheater budget. So this will more accurately track our revenue expenses. Supplemental appropriation will be for $59,559. And it is from our Park Fund, fund balance. And it follows the, our professional services agreement with Benewark. So be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Councilman Spencer?
Yes, I'd just like to ask, how does that correlate with, with the naming rights of the amphitheater that just has been announced?
That revenue is in that budget? Yes.
Is it under the sponsorship line item?
It is.
So, so the first year is not the full 75. It's been.
Thank you. And it's exciting to have that sponsorship. I think that's really, it shows the support we already have right off the bat for the amphitheater. And I know it's a little bit off the subject of this particular thing, but if people are interested in tickets, they can go to RiversideAmp.com. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And you have several events lined out, so we encourage the support. I know many of us have been to the events there already, and it's, it's extremely exciting. So, great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And 2021, 25.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to accept a HNGP Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, grant for the purpose of reconstructing storm water infrastructure near 608 and 609 Norris Drive.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Clerk already indicated this acceptance of a grant and a little under $250,000. It's a 7525 grant, meaning the city would have to match well over $81,000. That'd come from the Habsent Capital Improvement Sales Tax for the storm water line item. Few years back, we had a rain, heavy rain in this area. It flooded a house. We found that the infrastructure had failed. There's a couple of large pipes under the street in this area. So this seemed like a good match for this grant application. Staff was able to put it together and finally receive the grant to, to do this work. Answer any questions? We anticipate the work occurring from March, or excuse me, between November and March. There are some stipulations about that. Fish wildlife agencies, things like that with bats and valid sturgeon.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marash? Okay. And number 2021, 26.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule J, parking prohibited by the modification of B drive south of Canterbury Drive.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would modify the parking restrictions on V. It'd be basically two spaces south of Canterbury. Residents in the area felt there needed site distance. That was discussed at the Transportation and Traffic Commission.
Any questions? Thank you. 2021, 27.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, dissolving the facade improvement committee and allocating its powers and duties to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The facade improvement committee basically approves and reviews applications for the commercial facade improvement program, rental facade program, and the adaptive reuse program. The last major activity of those programs, I believe we did one commercial facade in 2018, one in 2019. We've done a lot of those downtown. The other two programs haven't had any applications. The summary is sort of misleading. We do have those items budgeted, and what we're doing is we're paying off, most of those are reimbursement programs on property tax. So we're still paying off on the applicants that were awarded these grant applications, excuse me, awarded the grants in the past. We're honoring those obligations. The Stork Preservation Committee certainly has the wherewithal and knowledge and skills to review facade applications, given the requirements in our certified local government program that states what sort of experts we have to have on the HPC. So we're basically asking to roll the facade committee responsibilities into the Stork Preservation Commission and dissolve the facade committee. With that, there'd be no fiscal impact at all, other than possibly some staff savings. The HPC has a standing meeting, the facade committee does not. So all the members are used to meeting, and that would also help move the applications along when we do go out for a notice of available funding. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
I really question, just a comment. I commend staff for bringing this item to us. I think anytime that we can solidate, downsize, government is a good move. I think the commission can pick up those activities. It will save us some staff time, but I think more importantly, it shows that we are looking at the administration of this city and can do it more efficiently. And I would encourage all staff, if they have other ideas of ways that we can do that, that it's a positive. So, thank you.
Great point. And I also appreciate the work over the years of the facade committee. I know they used to meet on a very frequent basis. And I think it just shows that this program has been so successful and the amount of people who have participated and fixed up the facades, taken down the metal and refurbished, and actually put several, I mean, thousands and thousands of dollars back into the buildings. And, and I know that being part of many of those meetings and sitting in on them and watching the facade committee at work, it's been very impressive, and it's made a visible difference in our community. So, thank you. 2021, 28.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Midwest ATC Service Incorporated for the purpose of providing air traffic control services at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period July 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Clerk indicated this is a contract to provide the air traffic control services. As you noticed, the time period was basically last year, this time through December of last year. The federal process to complete the paperwork is quite slow. But basically, also authorized this grant to help us fund that. Heads pick up 82% in the city. The local share is 18%. That amounts to approximately a little over $46,000 during that time period. This contract will have one more iteration, and then in April of this year, the feds started picking up the entire bill for these services. So we'll have one contract that's late to come as well. But that is a good thing for the city's airport.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marash? Thank you. Bill's pending. Item 13, we have 2021, 14.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement of corrective asphalt materials in the amount, in the amount of $97,290 for the 2021 street seal coating project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Clerk indicated most of the information, but just a little under $100,000 with corrective asphalt materials. We're piggybacking onto a contract that was led in mobile lead. They received good bids for this contract, but basically it will seal coats and streets that were previously overlaid.
Thank you. Any further deliberation questions? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Bill 15 is withdrawn, 2021, 16.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cook, Platt, and Strobel Engineers in the amount of $50,000 for the transit facilities feasibility study.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Clerk indicated a contract with Cook, Platt, and Strobel to have a local office here in Jefferson City. But basically, they will be looking at our transit facilities and locations, and our central maintenance facility as well as part of this facility, originally constructed in 1982. We received a grant to help us look at those facilities and decide if they could be cited elsewhere or remain in place. Once that's completed, then we would hopefully apply for grants through the Federal Transit Administration to replace this facility. Process takes about 10 months, and it's a 20% grant match from the city, which would come from the CIP funds.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2021, 17.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement of Cole County setting procedures for the Grant Street, Sidewalk, and Roadway Joint City and County Capital Improvement Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Again, a, as clerk indicated, city-county agreement with Cole County, basically outlining a project to be completed with our joint capital city and city-county funds. Each, the last sales tax, the county pledged $5.5 million to spend on projects within the city. This particular one is for Grant Street. County, just to even out the monies that we've been spending all along the last five years, the county funds would be approximately $550,000 of the agreement. Parks then leads to their facility would be picking up about $100,000. With the sidewalk, curb and gutter, correcting some storm water issues, things of that nature. It's approximately 2,000 feet long, goes from McCarty Street over to the park. It's now located.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2021, 18.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County setting procedures for the MSP Joint City and County Capital Improvement Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Another similar agreement with the county to contribute their remaining funds to total 5.5 million to be spent in the city. In this case, it'd be spent towards MSP project that we received the EDA grant for. But a little over 1.5 million is remaining, and that's what the county is pledging. The, go towards infrastructure at the old MSP site, grading removal, storm water, et cetera, lighting, pedestrian, all the above. The, obviously, these agreements set forth that the city would head up, head up the project. They would be transferring the money to us.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2021, 19.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Mr. Helmick?
Thank you. We're seeking today a supplemental appropriation for the abatement fund. Over the last few years, we've made great strides in increasing the amount of violations, increasing voluntary compliance. And part of that has been to actually be able to decrease the abatement expense. Fiscal year 2017, the city spent about $54,000 on abatement. 2020, we spent about $28,000. Our abatement budget for 2021 was $10,000. So far, we've spent about $13,000 on that. So this supplemental would bring us to about what we spent last year, which is what we're on track for this year. The funds that we spend on abatements, we recover those through tax liens, liens against the property, and then also possibly pursuing personal judgment against owners of those properties. As you can see, the percentage that we recover last year was 206%. Year before that, 100%, 140% before that. And those funds go right back to the general revenue. Any questions?
Questions?
This is the kind of stuff that we want to correct.
Okay. Any comments, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2021, 20.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Mr. Helmick?
Thank you. Property maintenance's entire fiscal year 21 demolition budget of $20,000 was used to demolish the failing structure at 1324 East Miller. The back half of that structure had collapsed and actually fell onto the property that was located next door, which is a multifamily home that's occupied. That leaves us approximately 38 structures that are under notice with no funding to do demolitions or any further abatement activities on that. This supplemental appropriation would be used to begin to address that backlog. The properties that we have through the dangerous building process so far, that we would look to use as supplemental appropriation for 108 Jackson, 500 East Ashley, 209 Jackson, 405 East Capital, 528 East Capital, 622 East McCarty, 431 West Miller, 307 Jackson, 309 Jackson. And then we have an additional six hearings in July that would set those buildings up to be ready to demolish as well. Those 15 structures alone, the total demolition cost would be approximately $465,000, based off the average for the last five years of demolitions that we've done. These are all, well, these are the current ones that have been declared dangerous, that are either in some, some phase of the dangerous building program. These will possibly require abatement in the future. Puts us up to 38 properties that are declared dangerous currently for about $1.4 million. Now, a lot of these properties, we do explore other options, Habitat for Humanity, different options, grant money, things that we can do. So not all of these will require funds just from the city, but these are the ones that are potential abatements that are going to have to happen in the near future. With this list and the list that you saw previously, it is a very fluid list. So those, those properties, as they get worse, get moved up, properties, you know, get moved down if they're not in, in immediate collapse. So the, the list of ones that we would go after does change based off what we have. 431 West Miller is one of those that was kind of low on the radar. JCPD had multiple break-ins, calls about squatters. We entered the structure. It's in a state of collapse. This is one we would look at using the supplemental for. 108 Jackson is in a state of collapse, both in the front or back. As you can see, it keeps getting broken into, so we have squatters and an issue with illegal activities there. 410 East Hess Way was a fire burn with no insurance proceeds. We've had two different instances lately of people breaking into it and multiple of the month following the fire. 405 East Capital, the roof has collapsed, the inside has completely collapsed. That's the interior of 405 East Capital. We've had issues with people breaking in the back of it as well. 209 Jackson, we have issues with the deck, the front deck, the chimneys are falling, and the interior is also collapsing. We have issues with that one getting broken into, and it's also on a traveled alley and right behind Ivy Terrace, where there's a lot of folks that walk right next to this, this structure. 320 East Miller is next to a multifamily occupied structure.[1713.31] The west wall is collapsing all the way from the roof between the two chimneys down to the ground. If it collapses any further, it'll fall towards the occupied structure. And then we have lots and lots of other potential dangerous buildings that we could look at spending money on. As stated in the previous meetings, this supplemental appropriation would also allow us the opportunity to batch demolitions together to get a better price. That's something that up till now, we haven't had the opportunity to do. So we may get more demolitions for the money that we have. The purpose of this is to get rid of life safety issues. We're not looking at just what looks bad. These are dangerous buildings. They're dangerous to life, limb, health, property, safety, welfare of the occupants and the people in those neighborhoods. So the supplemental request would help us demolish multiple dangerous buildings. And then the city, just like with the abatement, we recover these funds either by a special tax bill, a lien against the property, or a person judgment against selling of the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Helmick, and I think that also is important, what you mentioned, that last sentence about the importance of tax billing and, and getting that money back. And I also think that it shows some importance in our process that we've been doing on Capitol Avenue. Some people may see these pictures and think, well, why don't you just go in and, and put a for sale sign and let somebody buy these properties before they, they get to this point? And it's a lot broader than that. I know that code enforcement is out there on a very consistent basement basis, tax billing and mowing lawns and boarding up windows and taking care of the properties when the property owner won't. But we are not able to transfer the property without going through that legal process and which we have been doing, and, and we are starting to see some success with that. It's taken years to get there. But I think that this also shows the side of it that if that process isn't done, that eventually we have to have them torn down. So certainly appreciate all the work that has gone into that. Is there any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the work that Mr. Sanders has done making presentations. I guess at Public Works and Mr. Helmick. I think we have at times handcuffed our staff and not having the resources to be able to address this issue. Think as most of us were out and about talking to people in the community, one of the things that people point out are the abandoned buildings and why don't you take some action on those? So I appreciate the work that staff has done. Also appreciate the work that when we do them one at a time, it's much more expensive and hopefully get a contractor to come in looking at multiple properties. And I know there's been a lot of discussion on this topic. You know, I think we raised it to two hundred thousand as it went through the, the committee process. But I would like to propose an amendment that we increase that to three hundred thousand to give them even more tools. It's only a piece of that one point four million. But as you look at cities across the country that have revitalized themselves, one of the things that they have done is make an investment in cleaning up the city and getting us to a base point. So I would lay that number on the table as an amendment to this bill, and I totally support the bill to proceed.
A motion and a second for the amendment. So is there any council discussion? Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, I think it's an appropriate time. I want to thank Mr. Helmick for, on rather short notice. I went with him last week on a very warm day, and we went to a number of structures, not, not just the ones that he shown us here this evening. But the condition, conditions can only be described as horrific. And they not only represent, you know, and rather unsightly, structures and neighborhoods, but also they represent a very serious threat to our public safety personnel when they have to check these structures out. And certainly, if one were to catch on fire, then that represents a, a potential collapse. So we're only going to get further and further behind, and I want to thank Mr. Helmick for taking me around. And I think Mr. Sanders for allowing it to happen on such short notice. So I'm fully in favor of increasing this amount by an additional hundred thousand so that we can move forward and, and really make some progress in, in correcting this situation. Thank you.
Councilman Spicer.
First of all, I want to thank the staff. You guys are doing a great job. Think that we're supposed to, you know, eventually maybe getting some of the emergency money from COVID stuff. I would say that we probably should take the full amount and hear it all of it. It's a hazard to our police officers. It's a hazard to the city of Jefferson. That's a need that, that needs to be fixed to clean up our city too.
So we have a motion and second for the amendment. So unless there's any other discussion, we'll take a vote on the amend, accepting the amendment. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Spencer.
Again, I'm going to echo what Councilman Fitzwater, Schreiber, and Councilman Spicer has stated. You guys have really done a lot of good work here. And, you know, I think it really goes back to a point of, you know, previous councils' actions or inactions really make a difference. But, you know, previous councils have really stepped up this process of, of going after these, these properties aggressively. And I think it's really shared and said that it's really paying dividends right now. You know, I think that is a concern that a lot of us hears, the, the blight. The concern for our public safety with, when they enter these buildings. But I, I also want to share, or my concern is that making sure that you folks have the tools and resources that you need for your safety as well. I know we've had some discussions in that, and I just want to continue bringing that on as well because I think you, you folks are sometimes in some dangerous situations yourself. So whatever we can do to support, support your efforts in keeping you safe and your staff safe. Again, thank you for the great work you all are doing.
We have a motion and second for the amendment, so we'll take up the amendment and then we'll take up the motion as, or the bill as amended. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So now we'll take up the bill as amended.
Mayor, sorry, it'd be appropriate to take a roll call on that type of amendment.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Ward. Weisman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
So we will now take up the bill as amended. So any deliberation, questions, comments? Bill twenty twenty-one twenty. Okay, roll call, please.
Spicer.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Ward. Weisman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty-one has been withdrawn, twenty-two, twenty twenty-one twenty-two.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing the right-of-way in in-law at six ten from Handley Way Alley and Adams Street to Monroe Street and the twenty-foot alley from Miller Street that attaches perpendicularly to the Handley Way Alley.
Mr. Mullman.
Thank you. This ordinance would vacate the alleys that are behind City Hall and the police station. So Handley Way, which runs east-west, and then the unnamed alley that runs behind the staff parking lot and the municipal court and fire administration building. This request came to the law department from the police department essentially as a security concern. So generally, the city's ability to control alleyways and streets is, is greatly increased when the city owns those areas as the fee simple property owner as opposed to those areas being right-of-way. There are certain types of constitutional rights to go along with being, people being able to occupy and exercise first amendment activities on public streets and sidewalks. And, and what that has encountered is, is a difficulty in controlling that area and making sure that those areas are only accessed by, by people that really need to be back there. That alley really serves no public purpose. It's not really used by the public for any type of, you know, traversing from, from Adams to Monroe. It's really an operational area for, for police and for City Hall. There's parking directly on that street that we park code enforcement and public works vehicles. And there's just no real good reason to keep that as a public right-of-way and really return. Let the, the kind of legal status of those alleyways reflect the practical application that's really in use right now. And so by removing the right-of-way and vacating the right-of-way in those areas and returning them back to the city as adjacent property owner, the city has been able to control that area in a more effective way and make sure that any security concerns can be effectively addressed when they come up. There is a substitute to this bill. The substitute adds a provision, addresses a clarification on the, on the exact area that is being, is being vacated. And so we just pin that down a little bit more in the first whereas and the substitute. But also the substitute reserves a license for the existing non-city utilities to leave their facilities in the right's way. So electric, excuse me, electric telecommunications cable, and I believe gas is all back there. So we will reserve a license for them to keep their facilities in place and be able to access in case they need to be repaired or maintained for whatever reason. So that's an important addition that's in this substitute. So staff recommendations that the substitute be taken up in addition to the, the bill as substituted.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Spencer?
Is there any potential security enhancements for, for that, for that alleyway?
Right, so Captain Clark's here to, to address anything specific for, for police. But I believe that there's going to be some additional signage that gets put up that kind of notifies the public that unless you're there for official police business, you shouldn't be there. Anything beyond that, I would have to defer to the police department.
I mean, I, I, I do have a concern about that for even just signage, not, not meeting that requirement for security purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Clark and Mr. Mullman. And at this time, do we have a motion to accept the substitute for twenty twenty-one twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the substitute? Roll call, please.
Vote.
Aye.
Ward. Weisman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty twenty-one twenty-three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adding a new.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. Sorry, Mayor. I understood that as a vote to accept the substitute. Now, I believe the bill as a whole as substituted needs to be voted on.
Okay, I apologize for that, so.
That's all right. I'd like to move ahead forward, but.
Okay, I'm getting way ahead. I'm getting way too fast, aren't I? Okay, so now we'll take up the bill as substituted. Any further deliberation? Roll call, please.
Ward. Weisman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Now the bill passes. Thank you. Twenty twenty-one twenty-three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adding a new article to the transportation code and approving a form license agreement.
Mr. Mullman.
Thank you. This bill really accomplishes two things in the realm of small vehicle, calling it here, small vehicle, shared active transportation operations. And so these two things that, that this bill accomplishes first sets forth some generally applicable regulations regarding these businesses, and particularly, these regulations relate to operations of the, of the vehicles on city streets in the Greenway. Also addresses parking of these, these small vehicles. Essentially addresses the, the restriction to not block sideways or sidewalks and to, to keep the scooters in kind of a need and order manner when they are being parked. And then finally, it also addresses the, the licensing of these, of these companies that would like to operate these shared active transportation operation businesses. The other thing that this bill does, it sets forth a form license agreement that will be available to any business that would like to operate within the city. And so this form, form license agreement, once approved by the city council, would be available to be executed by the city administrator. This is consistent with previous instruction given by the city council to have kind of a more open business model for these businesses to come in. And if they can comply with the minimum requirements set forth in this code and set forth in the form license agreement, then they are welcome to operate within Jefferson City. And so we do have one company, Bird Rides, who has already indicated their willingness to execute the license agreement. And I actually got an email today looking to, to set up a kickoff meeting. Told me we have one more thing tonight before we could do that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, Gori, any particular details. I, I believe I gave a fairly detailed explanation at the last meeting. I'm happy to repeat that, but only if you guys want me to.
Thank you, Mr. Mullman. Are there any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
What are the enforcement mechanisms? Last time we had this opportunity in the city, there were a lot of them were driven on the sidewalks. They were dangerous. What is the enforcement mechanism? I know these are supposed to be used in the bike lanes and on the streets, but that's not what happened last time.
Right, so, so enforcement, like, like many things, it falls to the police. Police is the primary enforcement mechanism. And, you know, these are essentially the same as, as bicycles. And so if, if we, we found someone operating a bicycle on a sidewalk in a dangerous way, it would be up to the police to stop them and tell them to knock it off. And I'm sure it would escalate from there. But part of the license agreement does contain some educational efforts that the companies are supposed to go through. And, and part of that education is where to use and where not to use the sidewalks. And so, you know, the intent and the hope is that people are at least taking a look at some of that educational material that the providers provide to their riders. And, and then the riders adhering to, to that education. So, you know, that's not going to take care of everything. It just, it just doesn't. And so I really think it's going to have to be a community effort to make sure that, you know, the education is getting out there and that, you know, there's certain expectations on how to operate these, these vehicles. And if those expectations are being met, then that there'll be a joining enforcement action. You know, internally, city staff will need to take a look of how we actually want to do that and the nuts and bolts of how that actually will happen. But, you know, because it is a generally applicable quasi-criminal regulations and forth in the, in the, in the code of ordinances, like anything else, the enforcement primarily falls on the police. But I, I think that there's going to be a better opportunity for better education of the riders. And hopefully, we'll see some discrete, decreased instances of, of using the scooters in a way that they're not supposed to be.
If I could just follow up. I understand that these are activities that many cities like to provide. We're a tourist-based city and, you know, trying to provide activities for people who visit our city. I would hate to think that we have to utilize valuable police time to help monitor these activities. I watched them being ridden last time, stood in my office and watched a group up on top of the state street parking garage, taking turns, running them into the concrete wall and seeing how much fun it was to jump off. So not sure they're always utilized. My other concern is with the bicentennial bridge as it becomes available. Is that a path that these can travel across or that's?
Yeah. So, so Todd may be able to help me out if he's still here. It looks like he was able to, he wasn't able to stick around. But essentially, I would say that the bicentennial bridge is probably part of the Greenway Trail just by its design and how wide it is. But the, the kind of the beauty thing about the license agreement, it allows for the city to designate no ride zones. So if the city council were to say, we're going to designate, you know, the bicentennial bridge in the, in the underlying park as a no-ride area, the license agreement has a provision for the city to, to notify the provider of those no-ride areas. And this applies anywhere in the city if we want to have a no-ride area. And, and, and the, the company then can create a geofence where those, where those scooters cannot operate within the geofence. And so if that's something that the city council wants to do, or if it's something that city, or that city staff identifies and thinks needs to happen, you know, the, the license agreement can provide for that. So if we have some critical infrastructure that we do not think is appropriate for use of these scooters, I believe that the license agreement contains appropriate restrictions in the capability to designate those and actually turn those scooters off in those areas.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just going to follow up. You know, I was coming out of a business establishment on High Street a couple of weeks ago, and I got run over by an individual. I mean, obviously, we don't even have the, the service. It was their private. Mayor's talked about being in retail on High Street. You know, I don't know where High Street Business is, but that seems like an area we would not want them. My office is on Capitol Avenue. My office is on Capitol Avenue. The last time we had them, I almost had an employee run over coming out of our building because we come out of a door and then all of a sudden you're on the sidewalks. I like the idea of bicycles because I think people understand that bikes probably should not be ridden on sidewalks. But I think a lot of the people I watched last time think scooters should not be on roads, should be on the sidewalks. So I just have concerns about that piece of it. And I like bikes. I like having opportunities, and we want to attract people to our city. But not sure in the downtown busy traffic area that this is a great idea.
I also share those concerns. And part of the reason that my office is in support of this, I see this as one of these situations where if the companies are finding difficulty getting deployed by working with the individual cities, they're eventually going to go to the state legislature. And part of the theory that I'm operating under is that these are going to come, whether it's by legislation or litigation. And so this gives us an opportunity to kind of set our own terms, as opposed to those terms being dictated to us by the state legislature. That was kind of the situation that happened with the auto vehicle ride-sharing companies, the Ubers and Lifts of the world, where the state really said, okay, cities, you're no longer in this business of regulating these types of companies. We're going to tell you how you're going to regulate. It's going to be very, very small. And so, you know, efforts to form relationships with these companies on the front end will decrease the chance that they'll then turn to the legislature for, you know, for some sort of overriding preemptive type of approach. And so a little bit of this is kind of protective to make sure that we can get what we can give, while the getting's good, as they say. So I completely agree, and I share your concerns. But I think it's better for the city to dictate their own terms, as opposed to those terms being dictated to us. That's just a theory. I, you know, I could be wrong, and the state legislature could turn around and, you know, say, we're going to preempt the field. But, you know, the more cities that have these programs and are doing it with these types of agreements, I think the less chance that that's going to happen.
Wouldn't it also be accurate to say, though, if the legislature did do that, they would require them to adhere to traffic laws like the rest of us have to in our automobiles? And we all know that they do not do that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you would hope that any type of competent legislation would require that.
Well, we watch bicycles go through traffic lights now. I get it's boring to sit there on a bike waiting for a red light, but aren't they held accountable to the same traffic laws as we are?
They are. And under, and this is actually in current city code, you know, these scooters, these devices are subject to the same regulations as bicycles. And in fact, in our general city code, bicycles, the definition of a bicycle is broad enough to include these types of devices. So they are subject, they're literally subject to the same regulations as bicycles because they're defined the exact same way.
Councilman Hensley?
Thanks, I just have a few questions, Ryan. These contracts do not have us buying scooters, correct?
Correct.
And the city as an entity is not paying for the provision of these scooters?
No, we are not. And in fact, there is a license fee. It's a nominal license fee of 25 cents per ride that's initiated within the city.
Which the city receives per ride.
Yes, which we receive per ride.
Okay, and there's a bond, there would be a bond that each of these participating companies would have to secure that we could draw from if staff time is needed for picking these things up and storing them or whatnot.
Right, right, there's a, you know, there is a bond. It's a small bond, I believe it's $4 per scooter, but it's in the aggregate. And so, and it has to be maintained. So it's not something where we draw it once and then it's gone forever. They would have to replenish that bond, essentially.
Is it possible that that bond could also cover extraordinary police time that would be required?
I'd have to get into the license agreement, but I think I would be very comfortable making that argument, at least really trying. If there's something that's happening that we're going to have to expend additional resources, I would try really hard to be able to utilize it.
And we think- I mean, I could speak over it, but I think that would just be more annoying. We learned a lot from the last time these things were available here. And the current draft of the contract seems to have provisions that would speak to what we learned and more controls over the ride-share companies. And there's also a pretty broad termination provision in favor of the city. Right, so we think that there are more controls and safety rails in there at this time than last time.
Absolutely, there's definitely more control and more accountability running to these companies.